Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 10th meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. If everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, introduction of members. Amanda Gomaine from Millville.
Tammy Lemieux-Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Jane Reggio from Millville.
Tim Howell from Blackstone.
Carrie Goddett from Blackstone.
Erin Worth, Assistant Superintendent.
And Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Welcome, everyone. This is like my favorite meeting of the year. We do have a little bit of business that we're going to take care of first, though. We have some warrants, and I think they're working their way around, maybe somewhere, somebody's signing yet.
Yeah, whatever.
And minutes from May 26th, and so if you consider those together, I will entertain a motion to approve Consent Agenda A.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So my favorite time of the year, recognizing some people who have spent their careers, their lifetimes, some of them, in this district, in Services District, and in support of our mission, of our students, and our communities, because we won't forget our communities as well. So at this time, we would like to recognize the three. We've got some different recognitions today. We've got a bunch of different recognitions today. But we'll start with, uh, do you want to do one at a time? Do you want to do all? We'll do one at a time. We'll do, we'll make you come up one at a time and torture you. No, you want to go together? All right, all three together. Nobody wants to come up? Are you afraid of me?
No, I'm not afraid of anyone.
No. Okay. Come on up to the table. Pull your chairs up.
Go ahead. One at a time, go ahead.
Esther, you sit your room. Right now.
I'm going.
Okay, Sue, come on. Come on.
Just scoot behind.
No, 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 side by side.
Side by side.
Side by side, by side, by side.
If you taught reading for 23 years, you shouldn't be afraid of anyone.
So what, first of all, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll, we have some gifts for you, and for those who don't know, we ask our retirees to pick out a book that they would like to have donated to the library of their choosing within the district that is important to them and means something. So why don't you work your way through and tell us the book that you have selected and why you selected it, and anything else you want to tell us about your wonderful years here in Blackstone, Millville.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Is this on?
Yeah, you won't hear it. It just picks up for the feed, so.
It won't, won't sound like.
So Suzanne Livett, and I am the Administrative Assistant at the Hartnett Middle School. I have worked in the district for 20 and a half years. However, it feels like it's been a lot longer because I also started volunteering when my children were young, and then I started subbing, so it just, it feels like it's probably like 40 years. The book I chose is called A Good Kind of Trouble. I don't recall the author's name because it's a fairly new book, a new author.
Lisa Moore Remay?
Lisa Moore Remay.
Remay?
And I was looking for a book that was kind of, had maybe, you know, if, not information, uh, I was looking for a book that was geared towards the, what children were experiencing now during this time. And this book is about a young girl named Shyla. She's African-American. She attends a school that is multicultural, but she only has Asian and Mexican friends. She has no friends that are black. And so she's being told she's not black enough. And she follows the rules, she's on the track team, and she just wants to have, you know, good friends. And then comes along the Black Lives Matter movement, and her sister takes her to a silent rally or protest, and that's when she realizes that, um, what, what, what her, um, being, what being black in America is really like. And so she starts to wear a black ombre into school, which gets her in trouble, but it's a good kind of trouble. And that's basically the story.
Sounds like a great book. Yeah. Does anybody want to share stories of Sue? So I will tell you that I have not had a child that has gone to this, this school, but I will tell you, every time I walk through the doors in this school, I get the best smile that was ever invented. From like day one, I was always greeted by name. I was always greeted, even if I tried to sneak by and not go through the, you know, just come walk in, always a hello, always a friendly face. I will really miss you.
Thank you, Jane.
And I will just say, I miss Mrs. Livett and the years that I was here for my two children and being on PTO here and volunteering for pretty much every event that I could probably volunteer for. Mrs. Livett was, Mrs. Livett was always helpful in finding a key, a garbage bag, a bathroom at some points. So I will, the district will miss you. I mean, I think, working in a school, you, you are the operation, you know, you know everything that is happening here, and I think we will, they will miss you very much at, you know, forever. And I, I loved our years together while we were here and with Mr. Cameron at the helm.
Thank you, Tammy.
I'll echo what Tammy said, as far as being a parent at the time for middle school children and on the PTO, it was great. You were always very helpful, and whether it be, you know, to get in after hours, you would tell me how to get there, pick up a trumpet, whatever the homework might have been missing. So thank you. We will miss you, and good luck with, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Tara.
So. Thank you, Esther. And we put a, we put a plate with your name and, but there's your, there's your book.
Usually they're in order. We brought them.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's fancy, you're ahead of them.
Yeah.
I'm Lou Chase, and I teach third grade at AFM. I've been in the district for 20 years. I came as a permanent sub after I had stayed home with my kids when they were little and decided it was time to go back. I started out as a permanent sub, but then I taught sixth grade when sixth grade was still at AFM. And then they came here, and I went to third grade. After third grade, a couple of years in third grade, the numbers changed, and I went to fifth grade for a couple of years. And then I went back to third, and that's where I've stayed for the remainder of my journey. It's been great for me. I've made so many great friends and learned so much from everybody and love the kids, of course. The book that I have chosen is The Day You Begin by Jaclyn Woodson. And this is about a girl who enters a room and feels like she's different from everybody else. And as the book continues, she finds that when you express who you are and your unique person that everybody is, you learn from people, from telling your stories and stories of others that you have more in common with people than you think. It's just a nice little story.
Good story.
I guess that's it.
Anyone?
Can I add something to?
Yes, of course.
So I, so I have to say, watching Lou the past year was a lot of fun. As kind of crazy as this year has been, we, I've visited her class in person, but also virtually, and have seen her with kids online, so at home, kids in two classrooms, and her on multiple screens, and she's running the whole show.
Think I'd lose a few pounds.
I remember saying to Dr. Remka, I'm like, that was unbelievable. Like, she has kids in six places, and she's running the whole. It was really.
For the year.
Yeah, but you did it, and you did it so well, and it was really quite impressive, really impressive.
And if I may add, may I add?
You may add.
She couldn't even check her email.
No. I'm not techno savvy, but I've come a long way.
You have done, actually.
You have come a long way, it sounds like.
And not only that, she was helping walk in fifth grade mostly.
Wow.
Super.
Once we, you know, that time we brought all the kids back.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Going to see Lou and Robin's class, and she was extremely helpful. I did ask her to give me another year, but she's like.
She was, you've been fun to watch, yeah.
Thanks.
Great work.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. All right, well, you do the flowers this time.
We deliver flowers. That's the rule. The new rule. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Oh, hi, I'm Janice Torby. And I started out at AFM as a long-term sub, and my first principal was John Pilibozian. I remember the June where I wasn't sure if I had a job the next year because I was a long-term sub, hadn't been told yet, and I was walking out of the school with a cart full of books and supplies that I, that were mine. I wasn't taking anything. He comes running out of the school, "Mrs. Torby, where are you going?" I'm like, "What? I don't know. I didn't know I had a job." "Get back in here." So I turn around, I put all my stuff back in my room, and I started in this small room right inside the, right inside the door across from the office, which is now the bookroom. I was fortunate to be able to protect my husband's interest in myself this year by working remotely, but I did come back at the end of the year with, after being vaccinated, and back in the bookroom again. Which is kind of interesting. Still teaching remotely, it's been an experience, not an expert, but learned a lot. And I've been working with children my whole life, since I, before college got out, volunteerism and working with children from all different levels, walks of life. But I chose the book, I can't remember the name, We Are Water Protectors. I wanted to pick something brand new, pretty new, because I'm a reading teacher, and I know most, a lot of the books in the library, and I wanted to pick something really new. But one of the reasons I chose this is because I am really a supporter of the environment, and I learned a lot about STEM and how it, it's one of the things that inspires us, the children, to learn about the earth and take care of it. The other reason I chose it is because, like Lou knows, we work a lot together to teach the kids how to write as well as read. And one of my best writing experiences was teaching opinion writing or persuasive, we used to call it persuasive writing all the time. And I would work in classrooms, or I had a special group to help them, and I was inspired by the fact that children as young as third grade could pick, choose their own issue and run with it, learning how to write about it. And that's the only reason they wrote so well, is because they believed in what they were writing about. So this book is from the perspective of an Indigenous young girl who is promoting, taking care of the water in the, through the Dakota Pipeline, which is already uploaded, uploaded, up, um, can't think of the word, as a reading teacher, dug up a lot of graves, Indigenous graves, all along the Dakota Pipeline. And plus, it's also polluting a lot of the waterways there, Missouri River and things like that. But she is working with her people to advocate for it to stop. So it was just one of the ways to, again, another book to use to mentor kids to, to speak up for themselves and what they believe in. So, I don't know, I really like it. It's a beautiful book. It's, and the illustrator, Michaela Godd, is the first Indigenous woman to, or illustrator to win a Cadillac Award.
Oh, wow. Wow. Beautiful. It's beautiful pictures.
It is a beautiful.
You should look at the book.
But thank you so much. I worked with quite a few of you on negotiating team as well, and that was a good experience. And I really liked working with all my, all the staff at my school. I'm going to start crying.
Well, I don't, I have to say that, I'm not even sure, but somebody wanted to make very sure that you got recognized, so they said, "I can't make it to the school committee meeting, but just want to share what an amazing teacher Janice Torby is. We worked to get her for many years. Many years ago, we had our students write an ABC book about Blackstone. It was an alliteration and had historical information. Fred Hartnett was our superintendent. I know a copy was given to town and the school library. It was also illustrated by students. Ask her about it if you can. I don't know if you remember, but she has always put students first and has supported so many. It has been such a pleasure to work with her. She will be greatly missed. Feel free to share my comments." Well, clearly, I did. Hugs to you and your children. Thank you. And again, I don't, it was a message that was forwarded to Erin Vinoco, and Erin also couldn't be here tonight, so she forwarded it to me and didn't tell me who, who had sent it to her. So some, obviously, you clearly have fans.
I think it was Cecilia. We worked on, we worked a lot, she was a special ed teacher at the time, and we did a lot of collaboration with the reading support students, and that book was extraordinary in the sense that we gathered as much information we could about Blackstone and the river and the surrounding lakes and towns and the band from the school. And I wish I had it with me because we're going to have to get it printed up for the district. It's really special. But the kids, we taught the kids alliteration, so they had alliteration poem for every picture and every historical reference, and then they also wrote captions of the historical references. And they did, they read to find out, "I want to write about this, I want to write about that." So, and then they drew these beautiful illustrations. So it's a really cool book. We just did it with, you know, it's that spiral bound thing that we have, the plastic one. We made three of them, I think, but if we can find a way to print it out again, it would be a really nice keepsake for the town. Thank you.
Anyone?
I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Torby. I know that over the years, our reading specialists have been used in so many ways in our schools. Some good, some not so good, but I, I can appreciate how many teach, how many families and students you have helped over the years as a reading specialist and knowing that you have helped struggling readers learn to read and find their love of learning. I really appreciate reading specialists.
So glad to get books back in their hands now, too.
Right? So glad. Actual, physical books, yay.
Yeah.
Hopefully, people will read, spend the summer outdoors reading.
Starting today. It's a great day to be outside.
It's a great day to be outside, any score of the.
It's not, so I'm.
Again, these are the beaut, books.
Do we get to join a team with her t-shirts?
Retirees. The retiree team. See what it says on the back, retiree.
Retiree, yeah, on the back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, so very, very much.
Enjoy your retirement.
Before, Janice. Can you, yeah, just, so Representative Mike Soder is here to also issue citation from the State House, so he's going to come and speak, and that is not a ticket. People get nervous, right? Mr. Rep. Soder.
Please, I've got to apologize, so tomorrow you're going to have a very special day because we were in session and we were rushing to get out, so I have your citation. We've been running Boston morning, and we're going to come back and do it at the classroom.
Ooh.
Good for the kids.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I just, I apologize, it was a crazy day today. So congratulations.
Thank you.
This is a great career, and it's a wonderful career, and it's been an unbelievable influence to everybody in the community. Teachers are, teachers, staff, everybody that retires, anybody that works in the community through the education system always touches everybody's lives, and they really do. And I saw what a great job each one of you had influenced on Eric, so that's why. You know, he's still here, and it's funny because every time we do something unique and different like this, Eric says, "Oh, I remember this, and I remember that." So it's always good. So I should have probably let him do the presentation, and he probably could have touched on a little bit of, a few things.
Eh, he's like me, he'd start crying.
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know, maybe, maybe. And so I'm going to read each one, and then I have a special presentation at the end that I'd like to present here tonight, and I'd like to thank the board for having me.
Yeah, thank you.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be here known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Janice Torby in recognition of your impactful 22-year career as a reading specialist in the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. This is going to be, given this, the 30th day of June, because that's your official retirement date, 2021, at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and offered by Michael J. Soder, state representative.
Thank you.
That's so cool.
Should I talk to you?
He doesn't.
Now that time's probably where you love the health insurance.
He's not getting any.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Sue Livett, your impactful 20-year career as an Administrative Assistant in the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this, 30th day of June, 2021, at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and offered by Michael J. Soder, state representative.
Thank you.
We get together for a quick picture, we're going to do yours tomorrow. I promise, and then I got one more up there. If you guys can come up, well, just grab a picture.
Sure, yeah.
Go ahead.
You coming up?
No, I'm doing mine tomorrow.
I didn't dress accordingly, Mike.
That's okay. Listen, it's summertime. The only reason I'm dressed like this is because when I was in session, there's a protocol.
Yeah, step forward.
Get in. Yeah, Lou.
No, it's okay. I do it tomorrow.
You won't have all these people.
That's okay.
You know what? We're going to have you roll this one.
It's like the silent camera. You're used to be able to tell when you check the.
Just over here. I'm going to try to do this one.
There you go. I was waiting for this one.
Oh, yeah. This is the top one. Yeah. You know? You all be tired. You work so hard, and you like to bring smiles on people's faces. Somebody who touched hearts. And I think I said to our husband while we were talking a bit before the meeting, I said, "You know, it's, I think every child remembers the cafeteria lady." And I remember my cafeteria lady. I remember, you know, I was a very big boy back in school, so I ate a lot, so I remember the cafeteria lady. But the stories that you read and preparing to come tonight and hoping and being part of her retirement, of all the years of service that she gave to this community, but more importantly, it's a job that kept her going much longer, gave her a sense of purpose. She fought every day because she wanted to be with people she loved. Students, faculty, teachers, but more importantly, she went home and brought that joy home to her family. So I want to ask the entire family to please come up, all of you, here with us. We want to do this in honor of Sue Arslan. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, before I finish this, we will be addressing the house, we'll be doing the foot moments in her honor, I will be filing the paperwork in her honor, okay? Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Sue Arslan. Her impactful 25-year career in food service in the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. She will be forever missed for her dedication and commitment to schools and children. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune to the entire family and continued success with all that you look forward to in all endeavors. Given this, the 6th day of April, 2021, Massachusetts State House, signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and offered by Michael J. Soder, state representative. And I know I have tissues in there, it may be gravel, so these are, we do, I did have. Let's see, Eric, you're cute. But I, I just, I just think it's, I got it, I got it. I think Sue's name is always going to live on because of the scholarship. And I promise you that as long as I am here as your state representative, we will always make sure that that scholarship is offered, because it brightens, it continues to brighten children's hearts and minds. It will always be a memory, and always something for you to hold on to. May God be, may God make her memorable eternal holidays. And I know that she's watching over you, and you told me her favorite verse, whatever it is. So I'm just going to share a little sort of my, I have a little poem. The two hummingbirds sit you in the, for more than five minutes. That means that she's always watching you, that she's there with you, because she loves you, and she cares about you, and she wants to, wants you to know, every day she's all right. God bless you, God bless the entire family. I truly appreciate all of you. This is in her memory. And I will let you know the official day that we have the memorial, the moment of silence, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all. I truly appreciate you doing this.
Mike, thank you for doing this. I think, thank you.
Sorry, I'm the emotionalist. I wear my emotions sometimes a little heavy, but I should, but.
I have been in this district for a very long time, and I don't think there's better recognition than this.
Listen, that's what we're here for, that's what we're supposed to do, so. Congratulations. I see you tomorrow, and, yeah.
Thank goodness that happened, but it didn't last three minutes earlier, and Jane would have been diving for it.
Now to get my contacts to work.
Right?
Yeah.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That was almost perfect timing, because you would have been mortified three seconds earlier.
I would have. You know, you'd think by now, it goes off every day, and, and I tried to turn it off one time so it wouldn't go off in a meeting, and then he didn't get his meds, like, so it's like, I just can't, it's like, I just apologize and move on.
And we do have one more recognition, and I would invite Mr. Michael Dudak to come forward.
Did we pick a book?
No, but, well, actually, we picked a book.
We picked a book.
For you.
That's not the budget.
Not a budget.
So we did want to make sure. She would be one to say, Mr. Dudek, did you eat? I'm like, I'm not that old. Call me Mike, please. Um, and she just took care of me. And, um, you know, I, I just appreciated her and everyone else that's, that I've been able to serve at Blackstone Millville. So I just want to thank you for being here. Truly, our awards night was, was memorable, but having $3,000 to give to three students, deserving students that truly were honored to get that was, was just amazing. So I just appreciate that. Um, I just needed to start with that. It's been an honor and privilege to serve Blackstone Millville. Again, nine years. The, the kids are amazing. Students are amazing. I know I've had many of your sons and daughters throughout the years and, um, quite honestly, I'm just always overwhelmed with the talent, the drive, the ambition, um, the character that the students have. And, um, you know, for the faculty and staff and the community, um, I truly appreciated them, uh, in terms of supporting, um, all that we were looking to do, um, you know, with our, with our vision, um, at, at the high school and, and in the district. I mean, I truly believe that it takes the village to educate students and, um, we're able to do some great things that I'm extremely proud of, um, because of the work of, of many. So, um, I, I know I can talk. I'm going to be very quick and short and brief, but I appreciate all, everything that I've gone at, uh, Blackstone Millville. Uh, it's definitely a place that, um, I'll always remember, um, but definitely looking forward to, uh, our, our move, family move to Vermont. So, thank you.
And we saw you, you grow your family while you were here.
I did. We had a son at Blackstone.
Yep. That's right.
Or not in Blackstone.
Always be tied to here.
I believe you were sitting in the back when your wife was in labor and you were rushing out.
A few times. Mike had to go first, just to get.
Today was the day.
Anybody want to share any stories or?
I, I mean, I think just thank you for your years. I mean, it's, it's, um, it's a challenging job indeed. And in this town with our, our budget woes, um, I think we have, we have appreciated your creative thinking in how to get things done for, um, with the, with the resources we are able to give, which we never feel is quite enough. And, um, you know, I, I obviously I've had a daughter recently graduate from BMR and, um, I know that, um, she has the skills to be very, quite successful at the college level and, and you were the leader of that. So I thank you very much for your, for everything, for your energy and your time that you put in here. I know, um, our late night meetings together do take away from family time and, and we can always appreciate that as well. So good luck in Vermont.
Thank you.
The same. Thank you. Um, I have two, um, high school students. My, um, second just graduated last week, um, went through with you as principal. Um, and actually my oldest, you know this, um, goes to Anna Maria, which is right down the street. I was telling Mike a few minutes ago, we finally figured out which house was his and now he's moving.
And now he's moving.
So thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Well, we have a few little something.
Yeah, yeah. And we're actually going to unpack this and then repack it for you because there's some meaning behind it. So the first is to help you with where you're going. So the leadership team, uh, we got you a copy of the explorer's guide to Vermont because, uh, we have, I have certainly learned, Mike, from you, we all have, that you do, uh, want to get out there and hike and explore and check things out. And I know that you, uh, and your family really value that and that time together. So I hope this brings you some good direction and guidance, uh, as far as your move. And then, uh, this might seem a little silly, but to always remind you where you have been. This is actually the edition that came out today that has, uh, your quotes from your address and pictures of your last graduation with us. And so again, while it might seem a little kind of silly, um, we thought it was really important that you actually have a hard copy of this, um, so that you can remember that last graduation, uh, with all of us, your BMR family as you move forward. And so we wanted to review this.
And anybody who wants to go exploring, Michael will give you his address.
Actually, I'm wondering if that's why he's moving is because we do know where he lives now.
He has a landline, we have a pocket.
Thank you, Mike.
It's still published home books in Vermont.
Although I got one the other day in the mail. Did you guys get one?
I did. It'll be in my mailbox. I would check it off.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, we do have public forum. Is there anyone that has anything they would like to bring before the committee? Don't everybody run up at once? All right. Uh, Dr. DeFalcio, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks. Uh, and again, just a big thank you to everybody for being here tonight. If you do not want to sit through the rest of the meeting, I don't blame you. I'm sure there's more things that are, you know, more riveting than talking about a facilities director job description or a groundskeeper job description.
Thank you.
But thank you so much, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
God bless.
Uh, first up under my report, uh, we have a series of job descriptions that, um, I'm looking for, uh, the school committee to review and approve. These are all follow-ups from either prior budget conversations. For instance, the early intervention facilitator, which, uh, Ms. PG is here and can speak to if you have any specific questions. Uh, that was the split position that was in the budget that goes, that is going along with our expansion for pre-K. Um, but prior to that, we have two other positions that we discussed at the last school committee meeting, um, uh, which are the facilities director and the groundskeeper. And I'm actually going to ask, uh, Mr. Erwinworth to talk a little bit about both positions and then see what questions the committee may have on either of them. Mr. Erwinworth.
So for the groundskeeper, initially, the groundkeeper oversees the grounds of all district buildings, collaborates with the towns to maintain the grounds of the town-owned buildings, manages and prepares athletic fields and serves as a custodian as needed. I won't list the qualifications or read through the description, but I can say that in all of our conversations recently, speaking about our athletics fields and our graduations and our ceremonies, it always brings up the concern of what are we doing to make sure that we're taking care of our grounds and making sure that our students are coming into a beautiful and safe, secure environment. And this is a position that, uh, we desperately need. Not possibly a full-time position, but there needs to be someone that will tend to the grounds, given the large space that we have outside and how well-preserved we would like to get it. This position will also be, uh, again, a groundskeeping position is not necessarily a 12-month position and certainly it will fluctuate with respect to the seasons and the, the weather outside, but this position will also serve as a custodial position for when there's inclement weather or it's too cold to be outside and tending to the, the properties.
Thanks, Ms. Erwinworth. Anybody have any questions about that one?
So I think last week, um, I maybe when you put it in writing, you realized it maybe had more, um, duties than, but I thought we talked about making it part of the AD position.
So we had discussed that as a possibility.
Okay.
But to, to be clear, this position within itself is really a standalone position. Um, should, I know we talked about the AD that's presently here, that he may be interested in applying for this type of a position and that would, that would keep him here within the district. But again, we also have the AD stipend, which is part of the unit A stipend. And this position, regardless of who fills it, is something that we desperately need. So, uh, there's, will be the consideration of him filling this position, but, um, the position itself is going to be posted as, as described.
Standalone. And with that in mind, we might want to fix the notes from last meeting because that, the, the line that Tara's referring to, it says the person would be a .75 groundskeeper, field liner and athletic director. So if that's not the intent, maybe we want to go back to that later to amend the intent of that.
Yeah, because we had discussed, um, and I can go back and see if it was in there. That is, as we assembled the position, we could also pull the position apart and do them, uh, as separate individual positions as well. So if that's not reflected, we can certainly reflect that.
It's sort of, it's sort of wishy-washy, I think, in the notes. I think it says like, they would like, well, I know it says it. I'm not guessing. I'm not inferring. Um, they would like to propose that one individual could serve and also, um, serve as athletic director and also work on the fields, doing field lining. Um, but then that next line says, you know, sort of differently. Um, and then it says, would be unit C member, but with one stipend from unit A as athletic director, they are separate pieces. And then there it says, if someone in unit A wanted the athletic director job, they would still hire a .75 groundskeeper. So that sort of lends itself to the two pieces.
To go back, yeah.
So we might just want to clean that up for.
Okay.
If I could, in this, uh, knowing professional golf course people that they have degrees in turf and they could look at grass and say that it, it needs water, it's got too much fertilizer, um, and, and I have a personal friend that does that. I don't see enough in here to get the fields, the soccer fields, the baseball fields, the softball fields, the field hockey practice area, the football field and be able to maintain that quality. So as an added requirement, maybe, uh, to, and I know you're not going to find that person, you would have to offer them education. So, uh, within a specified timeframe, within six months or whatever, to acquire or start acquiring that type of education.
That is, I, that's certainly a consideration. I don't know if the committee wants that added directly to the description itself. I can say that we have been discussing repeatedly, in particular in our negotiations with unit C, that, um, we're looking to professionalize all of our staff in the district and make sure that people are taking advantage of every professional development opportunity that they can. And we want to try to support that with, you know, supporting the funding for that professional development. And certainly, um, certainly that is something that we can look into. As I said, I didn't read the, all of the qualifications, but one of them, and there certainly could be more added, uh, one is must hold or be willing to obtain pesticide applicator's license. So again, in that, in that vein, we do expect this person to know how to properly take care of the grounds and the fields. Um, if there's training that we feel is necessary, we will support that through, through our professional development budget. Um, but if the, if the committee sees that as something that they would like as a qualification or, um, or specific training included, we could potentially add that in. I think we were a bit worried we might not find someone.
Yeah, I think that would be more a concern of mine of, of, you know, kind of requiring that hot, I mean, I don't know what the pay scale will be for a ground. We do have groundskeeper in there, but it's certainly not going to be one of a pay scale that indicative of, you know, get this certification and that certification and that, this degree and that degree, um, at this, this stage. But I do think professional development is important. I do think it's important to look for ways to, you know, make sure that everybody has the appropriate training to do the jobs that we're asking them to do. And in this case, making sure they know how to take care of grass and fields and.
Kind of important. So, so the groundskeeper position is, uh, unit C member and it is on the custodial salary scale.
It is there.
Um, and the posting itself would be for a point, as we discussed, a .75 groundskeeper. So it would be a one point.
Yeah, and under duties, it does, um, highlight planting, fertilizing, maintaining a watering schedule. So I think that possibly could cover some of that, making sure it's, I mean, I think that would make it done properly.
But there is an art to it. There is a, there is an art.
He may. As the former groundskeeper, I can tell you that without irrigation, you'll never get the grounds looking like a golf course. You just got to rely on rain and it's, it just doesn't happen.
Which we have learned.
And at the time, Mr. Hotner did send me to a course on, uh, field maintenance, but there was no degree required.
Right. Do any of our fields have irrigation?
They just put it on the soccer field and the football field. The soccer field covers some of the baseball field, I believe, but not all of it. I could be wrong on that. I wasn't there for that.
Though you're absolutely right, which is why they can't use that.
And I can tell you, the softball field will have to be dug up and all new loom put down over there because it's kind of sandy. I threw grass seed down when I was a groundskeeper and it never grew.
I think, and, and the intention for those fields is to have the major repairs done as a project and the maintenance of, of said fields would be through the groundskeeper. And I know that I've spoken, um, with Robert, our athletics director, about the condition of the fields and, um, there was irrigation, as you mentioned, added. And as we explored the possibilities, I believe that the conversation was there wasn't enough pressure to get to certain areas. That being said, um, Robert and I have discussed bringing in new, um, irrigation specialists and trying to get an, uh, an updated assessment as to whether or not it is a possibility or not.
Yes, my understanding, they went down pretty deep with that well and they even had to frac it to get water and they could only get enough to do certain sections at a time. Willie Bacon could tell you more about that. And we do have true green come in now to fertilize the football field and the soccer field.
Thanks, Scott.
Just something to keep in mind. You can keep an outside company like that to come in and, and do the fertilization.
I appreciate that.
That's helpful, Scott.
And Scott, I'm sure I won't have him, but I'm sure Scott can attest to the amount of time to do the weeding and to clean around the fences and just to mow the lawns themselves on our regional properties that it is, it's a, it's, that part is a job.
Can we clarify which property, which fields this actually includes? Because I was just thinking about that.
So, so from the groundskeeping perspective, it would be directly and entirely maintaining the, the regional fields, which would be the high school and the middle school. But the hope is that there'd be collaboration, as mentioned, with the towns to make sure that both of the town-owned buildings are, are upkept as well. And there are certain things that while the towns keep the grounds, so to speak, there are things that certainly need to be done to make them look significantly better.
Yeah, I know Parks and Rec and Blackstone do a great job on our.
And we do have true green come in now to fertilize the football field and the soccer field.
Thanks, Scott.
Just something to keep in mind. You can keep an outside company like that to come in and do the fertilization.
I appreciate that.
That's helpful, Scott.
And Scott, I'm sure I won't have him, but I'm sure Scott can attest to the amount of time to do the weeding and to clean around the fences and just to mow the lawns themselves on our regional properties that it is... It's... That part is a job.
Can we clarify which property, which fields this actually includes? Because I was just thinking about that.
So from the groundskeeping perspective, it would be directly and entirely maintaining the regional fields, which would be the high school and the middle school. But the hope is that there'd be collaboration, as mentioned, with the towns to make sure that both of the town-owned buildings are upkept as well. And there are certain things that while the towns keep the grounds, so to speak, there are things that certainly need to be done to make them look significantly better.
I know Parks and Rec and Blackstone do a great job on our... The facilities over there at the complex, which are used for lots of different things. I wasn't thinking about... I was thinking about Millville and the little area over there, but that's their place.
And Overgo and Little League Field over there.
Yeah, I was going to ask that question myself. Because when I was the groundskeeper 20 years ago, I did all the schools, except for the middle school because it wasn't built at the time. With just a riding lawn mower.
That had the electric van that you had to want.
Yeah, was it the short rope? The short rope. That was a snow blower.
And we thank you for that service, Scott.
Thank you.
Next. Anybody else with anything else?
So this would include some collaboration with the towns, if need be, on the Millville and the complex areas?
Yes. I can't say definitively what percentages or extent this groundskeeper will own versus the towns, but that would be discussed.
Sure.
So the next...
I missed the first line that Tara was pointing out to me. It's there.
I read that one, too. I was quiet about that one. So the other position that we are introducing this job description for is Facilities Director. The Facilities Director oversees all district buildings, grounds, installations, and the activities of related staff on a regular basis to determine that high standards of workmanship, cleanliness, safety, and security are maintained. The Facilities Director would report to the Assistant Superintendent and directs and evaluates the work of all district custodial and groundskeeping staff. I will not, again, list all of the qualifications and duties, but I want to be clear that the duties of this individual would include oversight of some of these major projects that we undergo, such as the MSBA accelerated repair projects, hopefully the MSBA core project that we may eventually get involved in, depending on the direction of our capital planning subcommittee. And there's a lot of work that gets done with respect to the licensing of the buildings and the maintenance of the facilities, the fire equipment, the security systems, the HVAC, the mechanical and electrical systems that this individual would be overseeing. Both the internal staff that takes care of and monitors those systems, but also the contractors that we work with to maintain these systems because we do contract with a lot of them. And to have someone that is more familiar with that work and able to determine whether or not the work's been performed to par and search for those companies that will be best suited to do the work, that will be a tremendous addition to the district.
Any questions?
Is this a... This is an administrative position? I just want to renote that on here.
This would be a contracted 12-month administrative position.
Any questions? Would you like to hear from Jill and do all three at once or do one at a time? Let's move on to the next one.
Ms. PJ, you want to join us down up front here? You need a ride?
I have a big cup.
This is going to live on.
So this is the job description for an early childhood, early intervention facilitator. Again, I won't read the whole thing, but basically we're looking for a facilitator to coordinate all those initial preschool types of referrals, whether it's through E.I. or from parents. And this individual also assists with monitoring compliance. So they would need to have knowledge of both federal, state, as well as the regulations and processes regarding the E.I. referrals because it is a little bit different when it comes to our E.I. kiddos. It's... This person, too, is going to assist. So right now in our kindergarten, when we... I mean, our preschool, when we have students who are referred for an evaluation through E.I. or through parents, part of it is through child find, so they would assist with that child find, meaning we reach out to families, we reach out to daycares, we reach out to the community for any type of students who may have a disability. But also, this individual, right now, when we have a child who's referred, our teachers are actually assessing students. So it does take away time from the kids in the classroom. So this person would be the one who would do those full evaluations. I mean, not the speech and language OTFPT, but, you know, there's a central readiness skill. So we're looking for that person to do it as well. Also, when parents are coming in, whether it's preschool from a parent referral with E.I., you have to remember, we have to meet with these families, meet with E.I. and gather all that information. It's different than being a student who's already in school and we're able to gather that for the teachers. So that person would be engaged in that. And this person would look at the students who are initially referred. So it wouldn't be for reevaluations. It would be those kids coming into preschool for the initial evaluation, initial meeting if they qualify the initial IEPs.
And do we get about how many of those a year?
Let me just give you some ideas. So you know we expanded our preschool. So we went from this year, four sessions of integrated preschool and two sessions of sub-separate. This year, we have 26 role models, 38 students with special ed, and three drop-ins. So a total of 67, and over 40 of them this year are on some form of IEP. We've done, as of now, about 30 evaluations through E.I., and they're still ongoing. This year was an interesting year, remember, because with COVID, what happened was not even... There was no E.I. intervention services. It didn't happen. So we have kiddos who would normally have gotten months and months of services for, you know, communication, for readiness skills, and none of that occurred. So we had a huge influx of students this year, and the majority of our students who were referred did qualify. So our numbers, you know, did increase this year for our students on IEPs in preschool. Next year, with the additional teacher that we're going to have, we're actually, right now, looking to enroll 40 to 47 role models. So we're able to expand that. We're really happy about that. Our goal is, and Christina and I talk often, is to get all of our kiddos in. So we don't want to end... Our hope is to not have anyone on the waitlist. We did have, originally, all the kids were put into a section, and then we had some parents who kind of tried to sneak in at the last minute. So we really are going to try to accommodate as many as we can. So we're looking at about 40, 47 role models. And we think we're going to probably start the year with about half of what we have now. We do have kiddos who are going on to kindergarten, so we might start with 20. But I will tell you, we already have evaluations set up, you know, in the fall because we have kiddos who are being referred because through E.I. they're referred prior to turning three. They're referred like at two and a half, and we have to plan and assess. So we're ready to go. They're ready to go and enter at three. So that is ongoing. We do anticipate next year, we're still going to see that influx of kiddos through E.I. or parent referrals because of some of the lack. E.I. is just starting up now. I mean, they've been starting up, but it's not, you know what I mean, the true strong intervention. So we are thinking we're going to see that. So again, just about 30 as of right now, which is a lot for our preschool size. And they're still got, like, my team chair right now, she still has meetings on the last day of school. We're trying to get them in because any of our kiddos who turn in the summer, we want to make sure they're ready to go in the fall.
Thanks, Jill. Anybody else have questions for Jill?
Just a time. Is this a full-time?
No.
Okay, what's the...
So what we're looking to do is we're looking to use this within our current, the staff that we're bringing on. So it's probably going to be two or three afternoons a week, and we're going to kind of take it from there. Because our current team chair is going to be assisting, you know, this person, like, getting ready, getting involved. But no, this is not a full-time position.
Is it going to be within a unit? Is it going to be an individual contract?
No, it would be within, yeah.
Unit A.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, we have three. Would you like to approve one at a time, or would somebody like to entertain a motion to approve all three?
I make a motion that we go through each one.
Okay. So let's start in the order that we got. I'll entertain a motion to create an advertising groundskeeper. Moved by Tammy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Amanda. Okay, any discussion? I think we need to go back there. We're overdue. Probably shouldn't have lost it in the beginning, but we did. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, Facilities Director, administrative 12-month position. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Facilities Director.
I'll motion to approve the Facilities Director position.
Okay, moved by Tim. Is there a second? Seconded by Amanda. And any discussion there?
I've come on to the dark side.
I just, you know, I will only speak for the amount of work that I have seen Matt put in on top of the amount of work he has to do budget-wise. And I think we're long overdue.
And I think what changed my mind, I think with the, you know, thinking about those projects that are coming up, the bigger projects, I think that, you know, for me, it's like, what are we going to do to fill this person's... What is this person going to do? Is there downtime? Like, do we need a person or do we need a stipend to support someone else to do a little extra? But I think as we move forward on the Capital Planning Committee and trying to move some of those things forward, I think it's going to, you know, I've convinced myself that it will be much more beneficial to have this person on the here-now gathering the data rather than waiting until we... Until I feel we really need them, and then they have to catch up on, you know, what that part looks like and all these projects. So I know I was negative when we first talked about it. I feel like I've talked myself through it.
We are a large enough district with enough buildings and facilities that have not been maintained. And they've been maintained on a base level. I mean, our custodial staff is amazing, like amazing. Some of our buildings still look much newer than they are. But the down detail of it, the systems and the guts, if you will, you know, we just can't stay on top of. And we need to because we're going to start getting into a lot more money than we think we're already getting into, so.
The discussion of whether or not to replace a boiler and solar panels and other things in an earlier meeting and Mr. Aaron Wirth trying to do his normal job, that convinced me right off the bat that this is a needed position. My question comes from, you know, we're going to make this a 12-month contracted position. And if I remember correctly, it's Unit A, but I've, you know, new to the system, my thought process is where's the money going to come from?
So I can say that Dr. DeFalco and I did look through the finances, and we've identified areas where we will be able to move funds that we have allocated for other things into funding this position. Particularly as it will roll slightly into my financial reports. One of the areas that we'll be seeing a savings next year is in our... Some of our leases that we have on some of our larger technology purchases that have been... We have a number of leases that we feel that we're going to be able to buy out entirely, potentially. And that will free up that money for next year's, for next year's budget to be applied to funding this position and in the future, at least for some years to come, given that many of our technology units in the upcoming years are going to be intertwined with our grant funding for the ESER programs that we're running.
And I want to be clear, this is not a union position. This is an administrative 12-month leadership team, non-union.
I think that MSBA, you know, experience, background, knowledge is going to be... Just because it's so intricate, that process is always so intricate and time... So many things are time-sensitive and, you know, town-sensitive.
This person will also need to be directly tied to our communities.
Absolutely.
In those conversations, they'll know the building inspectors well.
I'll introduce them.
There you go. And to the neighbors whose trees will be cut down.
I will say that the negative is that Jason and Matt will not have nearly as much experience and knowledge about the happenings around here and the workings of the boiler, the water pumps, the roof leaks, and you guys may be sad about that.
If I walk on one more roof or out in the woods one more time in a suit.
I can assure you that as this individual supervisor, I will still know as much. My time may not just be consumed as much with the work itself.
For sure.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anybody want to abstain? All right, and early intervention facilitator. I'll entertain a motion to approve that job description.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Tara, seconded by Tim.
My only discussion is how soon can we get it done?
We'll post all these tomorrow. We'll get right on it.
I vote not it for search committees. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the early intervention facilitator description, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the ayes have the ayes.
Thank you. The last item on my report is an update from our athletics director. And this is a follow-up from our last conversation, from the last meeting. So a lot of follow-up tonight. That's good. It's a good thing. That's right. And so Robert's going to talk us through some of the specific requests that we got, received from the committee at our last meeting. There was a PowerPoint in your packet, but we also have it up on the projector for those at home. And Robert, we know that you are missing the softball game, and it is incredibly painful because we all want to be there.
Do you have an update?
Do we have an update?
I have an unfortunate update. They lost 4-2.
Oh, good game.
So I already had some girls come up to me saying that if we lose, it's my fault. So I'll take the blame today because I've been to every game, and they've won every game I've been to this year.
Oh, well, uh-oh.
We will make sure that you are not in the playoff season at the school committee meetings.
We're glad you're here.
They are going to play in the MIA state tournament, so they will have another game coming up next week, so.
Next week?
Yeah, just don't know the day yet.
Okay, can you let me know so we can get that out? That's a big deal, yeah.
So they've been doing a great job this year, along with our other spring sports. The boys' baseball team, even though their record doesn't reflect it, they were passionate and dedicated to their sport, showing up early to the field, staying late even after games, throwing around and stuff like that, which is great to see from our student athletes. Boys' lacrosse, we have two players on their team. They're advancing to semifinals on Friday. We have a freshman, Jacob Parento. He scored two goals in the most recent game. So we do have a lot to be proud of. Our girls' tennis team also finished a great season. They made the district's play... The Central Mass Playoff Tournament. And we're starting to get back to some normalcy. Kids aren't wearing the face mask when playing outside. I mean, it's just been a great experience for seeing like the spring and everything coming back to normal and having tournaments and seeing them compete at playoff level. So that's kind of just a starting point, I guess, my presentation that I was going to go over anyways. And it's nice to see everybody in person, not virtually.
Exactly, right.
And next, we're going to get your Twitter account, Robert, so you can send that stuff out real time to everybody.
I do have a Twitter.
Then I need to follow you.
You do respond to some of them.
Do I? Is that you that's sending them?
Yeah.
So someone has to teach me about...
Is BMR Athletics, if anybody... Is, is, uh, BMR Athletics if anybody does want to follow.
Perfect. Retweeting your stuff and I don't even know it.
Yeah. I usually just do it for home games, because that's when I'm there and I can tweet. Um, so I'll move to the next slide. So this is kind of what I was talking about, um, of what we're kind of experiencing during the spring. There is a new format with the Central Mass Tournament. Um, it was formerly known as the District Tournament. And, um, this taking place, it will be taking place during the regular season, so they'll see less regular season games, but they'll still see around the same amount of games as the normal season. It'll just be more of a playoff format. And then the MIA State Tournament is gonna go to kind of like a statewide format. So they'll be experiencing more like Eastern Mass, Western Mass, rather than just Central Mass when they enter the state tournament, which will be a great experience for them. Um, we might get to see that next week when the girls play. They might have to go all out west, or we might have, be hosting a team from way out east. So it's kind of exciting that it's gonna include the whole state, not just focus on small parts of the state and have the finals be against east or west or whatnot. All right, this next slide is going over, um, the fall sports. Uh, we have, hopefully it'll stay the same, but it's looking good where we'll return to a fall-winter-spring season and not have this fall-two season jam-packed in the middle. Um, fall sports will have the similar schedule as prior years with starting around eight-twenty-three and ending around October thirty-first. The end date does not include football, has a different schedule. They'll still end on Thanksgiving and, um, playoffs will still happen after the, um, October thirty-first date. Um, you can see up there all the sports that we hope to offer and have offered in the past. Um, signups are also currently opened for those that are interested in participating in these sports. I posted it on Twitter. I also sent a letter out through two parents, or the principals did, through all call. And then this is kind of going over, um, what we're hoping to do in the, this upcoming year for fall sports. Do you know how to turn the pointer on?
How to turn the what?
The pointer. Is there a pointer or just kind of go over?
We can see it on this one.
There is a pointer.
Yeah, I don't think there is. You just want to talk.
Um, so yeah, I'll just talk about it. Um, you can see both the complex and the high school. And the plan is to kind of switch a few of the sports around to have, uh, accommodate not only the space that those sports need, but also provide, uh, baseball and softball seat, uh, fields some relief from having it be used during multiple seasons. Um, it, the porn parts that are moving, everything else is pretty much the same for all the spo- all the sports except for football and soccer. Football will just move up to an area that's not currently used by any sport. And they'll be using that a portion of the field alon- along with, um, a down, down portion where they can still store their equipment. And soccer practice will take place at the complex, which has, with, um, speaking of some of the athletes that they do prefer to play there as it's a nicer field and it's also more open to provide both teams with the adequate amount of space to reflect a normal season. And we're looking to have all field hockey, football, and soccer games take place at the football field and the track and field, um, area. And we purchased with money that we saved, um, during the pandemic to purchase new soccer goals and field hockey goals to accommodate being able to provide that opportunity to our students. And then right here, we'll have all our middle school sports back at the middle school. We'll be offering, um, middle school soccer, which we weren't able to do this year. But traditionally with JV team, middle school soccer will provide us a better opportunity to allow our student athletes to compete against likewise, likewise competition and not have, uh, a lot of underclassmen.
A sixth grader.
Yeah, sixth player, sixth grader playing against a high school kid. So it'll help, help our students develop too, when, and they'll be more ready for when they play varsity sports. And middle school gym will still be used for cheer practice as, as in the past. And then this just goes over again, the traditional, uh, winter sports that we offer. And it's no change from any other year. Um, we still want to offer those co-op opportunities for our student athletes with Grafton, Auburn, and Bellingham, and hockey, and swim.
Do we have girls hockey?
Yeah, this year they, they canceled it due to the pandemic, so they didn't offer it, so we weren't able to offer it.
In the past.
Yes.
Who, uh, Robert, could you just say the, the co-op hockey people again?
Co-op is, um, the boys' side is with Bellingham and, uh, girls' side is with Auburn. And then swim is with Grafton. And then this is where the facilities look like, um, indoor track. It'll stay the same as a typical year, use cafeteria weight room, which they've been using. And then the high school gym will be used for basketball, varsity and JV. Um, JV basketball, we alternate between the high school and the middle school for practices. And middle school JV basketball practice games will take place there. And the cafeteria, um, during the winter will be for cheer practice as it always has. And then spring sports, um, looking to offer the same opportunities to our, our student athletes as we did this year. Um, we didn't offer boys' tennis, but I've had a number of boy, um, students express their interest. I think, um, the girl's success made them want to try to kind of match it, so that's pretty good. So we're hoping to offer both boys' and girls' tennis next year and also co-op with, uh, Boys Lacrosse, with NITMOK again, um, as our students have had success this year. And offer the opportunity for co-op for girls' lacrosse, um, which none of the girls took up this opportunity, but maybe next year they will if they choose to.
And who would that be?
That would be with Hope Dale.
Oh, Hope Dale, okay. That's who it was previously, but I thought something happened there. Okay.
Um, so the thing with, uh, Hope Dale, previous years, the boys were also with Hope Dale, but Hope Dale no longer offers, uh, varsity lacrosse. So we, NITMOK was gracious enough to allow us to have our few students.
It's a great, NITMOK's team is great. I had the, I don't know if it was a pleasure because I was cheering for the other team, sort of. Um, but wow. That is an aggressive sport compared to girls' lacrosse. That's all I'm gonna say. There was a lot of like testosterone going on there.
Well, their baseball team was the same.
And they've been very welcoming to our boys. I've heard positive things from our boys.
And so we have a senior that's graduating and a freshman, you said?
Jeremy, yeah, Jeremy Gallop and Jacob Parento. Um, these are the spring facilities. We're gonna return kind of back to a normal year with, um, all of our sports taken back, um, taking place back at the high school. With, uh, track and field meets taking place where they take a place this year at the track and field. And JV varsity baseball, if we have the numbers, um, same thing with JV varsity softball taking place back after the, at our high school after, um, the projects take place and we're able to get back to, back at the plane shape that our students, um, need for safety reasons. And I'd like to thank everybody on the committee for approving those updates and renovations so that we can bring them back to the high school.
If I could real quick, just looking at things and know, knowing that there's fencing going in for the, uh, varsity baseball.
Yes.
Where's the football field gonna, or where's the football practice area?
It will not affect the football field. It's gonna be, uh, ru- along the, um, third base, um, yeah, third base side. So just kind of protect students from running off the field and hopefully keep some of the balls in play that would just roll down into poison ivy.
Okay, because one of the, one of the things I'm thinking about is they're gonna want to get out in the practice on the softball field or the baseball field. And if we're gonna spend money to top dress the fields and everything else, then they can't practice there because they'll put ruts out there and destroy the, waste the money that we're spending.
Yeah, so, um, it's, you really can't tell that good in this picture. But prior to where, even if we did want to build a complete fence, the football team would have a whole, whole like former, it's a former softball field that's not used by anybody and wouldn't even affect any of the fields that our spring sports take place on. And they will still be able to use a large portion of the backfield for their, um, tackling sleds and other equipment that they use for practices. And that will not affect the softball field either, so they would have a small portion of the backfield and a huge, large portion that's, that was, uh, formerly a softball field or maybe a baseball field that they would be able to utilize for their practices. So they, they would be gaining more space than that, that they currently use right now. I, I went out there with a measuring stick and it was over fifty yards that they're gaining just by moving from the back to the front.
When you say the backfield, that's the field behind the rock?
Yeah.
And then the field you're talking about is to the left of the rock? Where there's already a back, there's an old backstop up over there?
Don't talk about the old backstop area. And then, I mean, even if I'm the, if whomever the groundskeeper, they could easily take down that old fence and that would even prodish, produce even more space for them to practice at.
Would it be worth even putting like temporary fencing or something where the baseball foot, um, outfield would be to keep the football, like knowing that this is the line, don't practice on?
The question is how soon are we gonna be able to get the fencing put in to seal off the baseball softball areas?
That's something that, uh, me and Matt have been working on. Um, it has been a struggle to kind of get these quotes and estimates, even estimates, really quickly because the pricing for fencing's fluctuating.
Sure.
And I've been working, I had two people come out recently and I would keep on hounding them like, can I get a quote? Can I get an estimate? Can I get an idea? And they're like, oh, yeah, we're looking into it, like the price is changing and.
Yeah.
Oh, it's kind of tough, but hopefully it slows down a little bit. And I mean, we have still three months before football will even use it. And then another, almost nine months before baseball and softball would need to use it. Um, and then, uh, I believe it was Tammy or Tara that made a point about temporary fencing and that that could be a possibility, because me and Matt were also talking about, again, temporary fencing for track and field, track and field meets. So we would just use, use that during the fall and then utilize it during the spring for track and field events where it'll kind of protect our student athletes and spectators from walking across the field where kids are throwing disc and shot.
Javelin.
And that, well, the javelin, the javelin is like across the driveway. So I mean, I think when we get a groundskeeper, they'll have to kind of consider, I've said for years, they should throw the opposite direction because one side gets so muddy, but, you know, it's just what we fall into that pattern. But, um, I've spent many time on the other side of the, on the other side of the road while we're at track meets. But thank you for this.
Yeah, no problem. Um, and then we would still use, um, these, uh, Roosevelt as alternate site for JV practices, not games, just practices when, uh, varsity might be taking up the space and wanting individual practices.
And is that something we get approval from, from the town?
Yeah, and I talked to the baseball coach.
Something?
Yeah, I've talked to the baseball coaches and, uh, softball coaches. It's something they've done in the past. They don't, they don't use it that much, um, but there has been times when they've used it, just, just to kind of separate the teams.
And there's no fee to use the facilities behind the?
No, we've, we've used Roosevelt all this season and it's been great working with, um, work with the town and they've done a great job maintaining the fields, provided our students with that.
We just need to clear it with the town.
Yeah.
Robert and I have gone in front of the parks and recreation as we did for the soccer, soccer fields and they were very amenable and super helpful.
Do you do it by season or by like dates? Like, is it sort of like we're gonna use it every day this season or?
We gave them specific dates and then, um, I can speak for the soccer field that they just want us to make sure that we're in communication with the other leagues that are using the field so that we're, we're coordinating if there's any kind of.
And that was the same for the season where just kind of gave them the schedule, the time, expectations that we plan on being there and just communicating with them. Um, and these are the repairs that, um, we're speaking about, uh, making for, um, the upcoming year. Updating the baseball field, softball field, tennis court, track and field. So the, these, uh, following slides go over some of the pictures of the current state. Um, as you can see, it's in kind of rough shape, a lot of weeds and stuff like that. That's why it's great that you guys approve of the groundskeeper so that they can stay on top of them.
Clearly see the need.
It is going to be.
Bring some pride to our students, our community.
Can't wait.
Because, um, the boosters for the baseball team did a great job in, uh, raising the funds to create a great backstop and starting building the dugout. But, um, so the, the projects would just be kind of completing the home and away dugout, uh, adding the top to the dugout to protect our students and, uh, baseline fencing, which I mentioned. And then to answer your kind of question, um, Tim, is just kind of making it go straight down the second pitcher, kind of like a straight line, just have it keep going down the field.
To the hill? Is that, is that what I'm looking at? From to the hill that goes up to the drive?
Yeah, it would be like, uh, ten, ten feet before the hill so that people can still cut through and get down the field.
Slide down. Slide down.
Essentially be fencing down, pass it with soccer field typically.
Yeah.
That'll help, well, would I, actually soccer is off that field now based on these. Because otherwise it would actually help soccer balls not go.
So will soccer ever be moving back there or this is?
Yeah, that's a little scary.
It's probably a one-year trial and reevaluate after this year.
But if you have the fence there, then soccer.
It won't affect soccer even if they do return, because it's far enough away where it won't affect it. It's, it's hard without seeing it, but it's, it'll be like only, it would only be like ten feet that would be used as like a walkway kind of deal. It's not, it wouldn't take huge space away. And this is the current state of the softball field, as you can see in the third pitcher. Um, the, the field is in really poor shape where you came in, it's like basically dirt and diamond grass. And that is a large contributor, contrib- contributor for, um, football taking place there. I mean, this year it was even worse because it was taking place right, right before the season started. Um, and then another reason why a groundskeeper is such great and I, I thank you guys for approving that too so that we can maintain this field as, even the infield is in rough shape. And the main reason why we're gonna update the fencing, um, we wanna kind of create equality in our district by providing the same, same, uh, backstop as the boys do. Um, this will help the girls tremendously by not losing balls and not having to go, you know, poison ivy to try to collect balls. And, um, we'll kind of do the same thing as the boys, create a, uh, a base, uh, fence down the third base side and also create dugouts for them to be able to utilize, just like the boys.
Can I ask a question on these fields? Um, when Scott was up, he had mentioned that, I don't think we put it in our budget numbers, um, that the fields themselves probably need like new dirt down, um.
Yeah.
That's top dressing, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we have like the fencing, the dugouts, but we don't actually have anything allocated towards. So I mean, I know we approved a certain amount of money last week, so I don't know if it would maybe fall into fitting within the budget we approved. But we, we might need to consider making sure that we know what it costs to make the fields baselines, whatever.
What it needs to be, yeah.
It, it's definitely, the intention is to make sure that we get all of it taken care of.
Yep.
We still just need to get some updated estimates on getting some of that material and the workmanship.
Yeah, it's been difficult work with them. Um, I, I even spoke to Willie. He was trying to talk to Tru Green about how much they would charge us and he still hasn't heard back from them either. So like, I don't know what his contractor is.
As Robert mentioned, I, I think that given the investment that the school committee has approved to put into the fields, we'll be able to find, make sure that there's funding available to, to really finish, finish the job, so to speak. Some of that might be from athletic, you know, there was remainings in the athletics funds through, through the whole COVID process. As Robert mentioned, we purchased new soccer, soccer goals and field hockey goals so that we could really start to give some equity to the sports. Um, and then we'll be looking again to just put all of this topsoiling on and finish it properly.
With the nets in mind, have we decided or has it been figured out where we're actually going to score, store some of this equipment? Because I know we talked about, we, we, yeah, we haven't done a she shed lately. Um, have we talked about where we're gonna store those kind of things? Or is that like upcoming?
We, we brought up the idea of using trailers kind of like, um, the desk we're stored in this year. So that, that would be a good temporary solution.
We 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 had very good experience this year with the um, storage units that we got and they're. Relatively inexpensive and it's more as opposed to a large upfront cost to construct something, they bring them. We they're insured and then we, you know, if we need to remove them, they can remove them and it's just more of a a monthly fee.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we can, like a pod, yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, the shed stuff, I mean, the the lumber prices are. So ridiculous right now, like, you know, eighty to a hundred dollars for a piece of. Plywood that you can't even find, my husband's in that business and he tells me stories, I'm like, who's building a house at these prices? Um, so it might be beneficial for this year to actually do that, yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, I I kind of think what I know you're going towards, kind of build a more permanent thing, but like, like you. Have more more funds available when it's not having all these big projects are done.
I have questions about the soccer, the. I know from the, from your presentation, we're looking at using the the Parks and Rec area this year.
Yes.
I, and there's an area that's been. Uh allowed, that's, and and we're talking about it earlier, that's right next to the baseball field. What are, what are the long term plans past this next three hundred and sixty five calendar days? For the soccer program, are we gonna go back to the Parks and Rec again and say, hey, can we use your fields again another year? Or do we have a concept in the next two years to fill the area that. We have a lot allocated for the soccer program. So that they'll have a a decent practice area.
Yeah, um, so I guess it's kind of seeing if there's any flaws in the current plan, um. As me and Matt went over, we see that um soccer is the one that even the. Dimensions of the field is the ones that take up the biggest amount of space, next is football and then field hockey, so we have. Limited amount of space, um, even though we have a lot of space, it's limited in what we can do with fall sports in particular. Because there's so many sports that we offer in the fall. And the complex is actually the space that provides both the boys and girls soccer, because we have two teams going. The best opportunity of practicing in most game like situation, so that would. If there's any flaws, we can reevaluate, but that I believe would be the plan going forward is to have them play there.
Unlike Roosevelt, the Roosevelt, I mean, it is at our school, so it is the the rec department really has. Precedence, but it is, uh, it is a district field for the most part, it's right to the side of the of the complex and. Um, as Robert mentioned, we really tried to look at what sections of field we had and allocate them according to. The actual field space that each sport uses and give them at least the closest amount that we could. And that soccer space aside, the complex really gives both the boys and girls soccer really a decent field space to practice in and it's. Maintained and to your point earlier, you know, what is the collaboration between our groundskeeper and the towns? Certainly as we move forward with these joint endeavors of using the same field space, those are things that we can talk about with the town and say, hey. We understand that we're now really sharing this, but we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that we maintain parts of it or are covering these aspects. And and as Robert mentioned, this is a one year plan for now and we will certainly evaluate it. And if there are other options that that we can identify in the meantime, we're we're hoping.
I have a question, has any conversation been had with BMYSO? Because that is all of the goals that are there that belongs to BM BMYSO. So our teams will be going and shooting on those nets five days a week.
Well, the plan would be to bring our current goals, that's why we're purchasing new ones.
We'll be bringing goals there for practice, but playing.
And having new ones here for the.
So our athletes will be switching out BMYSO's goals on Mondays, putting ours, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so. So I was thinking that um, when we were going for the initial plans and I I'll try to go back and.
And and again.
Show the field space, I'm actually considering now, when after we got the approval, um, is to use that. I believe it's a softball, men's softball field as part of what the area that they're gonna practice in. And then using.
I don't, I don't think that's a very. Well taken care of field to send soccer players.
That field is often underwater as well.
To 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 your point about the use of the goals.
It's just all the equipment there is, you know.
Again, I think we've started to have some conversations with the town and we have contact with um, the soccer league. But I think again, that's one of those conversations where we can say, maybe we're replacing the nuts. You know, and maybe we're splitting costs similar to our work with the town to maintain the fields.
They would, they would, I'm sure they would appreciate somebody else lining the field because I remember who used to line the field and he would love for someone else to do it.
I think the, I think the important part is the discussion.
And I think it's other noteworthy thing is that the, I I don't, you know, we don't have names for all these fields, so it's like, you know, next to Almax, but. The field that's at the bottom of the hill of the high school, which is in the outfield of baseball. Which is along this fence that we're thinking thinking about putting in, that is irrigate, that does have a water system, so it's like. We, somebody spent that money and so it sounds like right now no one will use it, so then the question is. If if it's not big enough space for soccer, is it big enough for field hockey where they might have. A better practice experience than what they might, you know, and again, it's not necessarily for next year, I'm just saying. That we have this, we spent the money to actually do some stuff to that field, not perfect in any means, but is it better than. What field hockey is currently using now and since it's already water and all that stuff, like you hate to say, okay, we. We put all that in and now we're not, we're gonna use it for nothing except. The baseball outfield over the fence that will be installed.
No, the fence isn't gonna go there.
Oh, not gonna go there, okay.
It's just going up along the woods.
The left, okay.
And they do have, even if we do want to put outfield fence, they do have um, temporary fencing kind of down for baseball. And I have looked into that, I just haven't got prices again, but.
It goes into that soccer field space, right? The baseball outfield.
Right.
The equity of the field space we're allotting to different teams. Like anyone who has seen where the field hockey team will be practicing, that's not really a field.
Is across the street in the driveway better or what is something else?
I I looked at, I did the measurements and it's less, so that was something I was thinking about. Where we don't have enough space to provide like all these sports proper areas.
I mean, I think the idea with the soccer right across up the street for this year, it'd be nice to see it through and if it doesn't work out.
It's a good feel, I mean, it's a.
Classmen that played, I guess, even had high school practices or what whatnot, um, they said that they did have positive experience there and they would. Enjoy going back there for practices and.
Getting back and forth, what do we do to get them back and forth? Do we just let them walk? I always questioned the bus.
In high school baseball, when I was in high school, the baseball team always played at Roosevelt and their warmup was to run there and their cooldown was to run back. But if we have middle schoolers playing varsity soccer, because a lot of them played it last year. What will our transportation be from here?
Okay, you guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move us forward, so we get through Roberts, because transportation is isn't, isn't one of those. It is a budget issue and it is a discussion we have, but let's, let's get through fields.
We have to get to the field, so that's the reason for the transportation.
Two more slides, uh, this is current state of uh tennis courts, um, as you can see.
Is that, is that Officer Loudon's badge? Cause that's what it looks like.
No, it's um, Willie's uh, like knife or something like that.
Willie's knife.
It's like a box by knife, um, so.
Needless to say, looks dangerous.
Well, I uh, was actually able to put my like hand in there too, so that's like.
Your hand?
Yeah, so it was, it's pretty large cracks. And that's why we were able to, with the help of one socket, be able to offer them a place to practice and then they traveled all. To all their um matches throughout the season and they did a great job, they were road warriors, they had a winning record and everything and.
This will be fixed for them for next year. That's awesome.
And then um, track and field, uh, the first two pitches slows, show some slight crack, I did have a person come out from. Um, Cape and Island Track, uh, he said that it it will need some repairs, but right now it's in. In uh pretty good shape, especially considering the amount of years that it's been used. So that's, that's one of the positives from um, getting these evaluations and quotes. Um, but as you can see, the fencing and discus areas kind of broken and could cause a hazard and. Um, it's not too much to um, prepare as, as it will help. Uh provide a safer environment for everybody. And then I had the last two slides are kind of just going over some of the MIA rule changes. For the um upcoming year, uh twenty five. Yeah, twenty five rules were um approved, which you can be, which can be viewed at the link at the bottom. I just wanna highlight two of the main ones that will affect our students and that they should be aware of is a bona fide rule. Uh, which basically says that uh high school athletics takes precedent over any other out of, out of season sport. And or any AU sport, anything like that. If the rule is broken, the first offense was previously twenty five percent of the season, now the first offense is just one game. But the second offense is still twenty five percent of the season and um, some of our basketball players might be excited about this rule uh change. It's going from uh four quarters of play during regulation to six quarters of play per day for regulation. And then the other rules are just rules that I can go over with coaches and the teams that we offer that had those rules changes. And there's a new addition to. The MIA with the new sport, I'm gonna go over that for the next slide. And then the the rest of the rules are stuff that would come from uh the athletic director, just forms that have to be filled out. Form changes, kind of boring stuff that I don't wanna bore you with. And then um, so yeah, MIA is adding boys, field hockey, seven, seven V seven, which is kind of exciting for boys. That and and the girls that they won't have to play with boys, because there is a few boys that play. Because the MIA didn't offer the sport previously, um, this is why I believe that we shouldn't be looking into it for next year, but maybe in the future, who knows? Upstart cost is probably around fifteen thousand, um, that's just a rough estimate, my name, plus paying coaches and. And well, we obviously already went over this with uh field availability, availability is kind of limited as it is during the fall. So that'll be another difficult part and also communicate for other schools in DVC, they do not plan on offering. Uh, field hockey for boys this year.
Have you heard of anybody that's considering?
I have not, um.
It's a big reason of why not play this year, I haven't found anyone.
Have you ever had anyone ask you?
I personally never had a, not even my previous school, I've never had.
I have seen boys play.
Yeah, there has been.
We actually, I think, didn't we have a couple?
We have not. Um, and then contacting nearby schools for co-ops, uh, just as any other sport, if there is interest in our male athletes. And that was the poor part, if you have any additional questions.
The rule changes indicate uh, the football change, trainer required home and away varsity games, what's the? What what's that for a financial, is that just in your budget somewhere or do we have?
So that wasn't in the budget because it wasn't approved when I created the budget, it is. Can't remember what we paid our athletic trainer.
I'm I'm sure that we'll be able to cover whatever the new expenses from some of the remaining funds that we do have from COVID, so. As we move into the twenty three year, that rule continues, it'll be, it'll be built into it.
So a trainer is now required for just home games, but we have to send a trainer to away games as well or this is totally new?
It's new, um, previously we just had to have a trainer on site for home games, but now they want both teams to have it. So we would have to send a trainer to a way game as well, so there'll be two trainers at a game.
So each trainer will essentially like serve their own team instead of.
Instead of having to go back and forth if there's multiple injuries, it is beneficial to have two trainers at at a game, it only makes sense. Yeah, it's only for football, football is actually the only sport that a trainer is required to.
A lot of people get hurt, football.
To be in place. So I mean, I I wanna say that we pay around a hundred dollars, so it won't be a huge expense. But it will be a slight expensive, I think typically, typically here you'll probably see four varsity games now, you'll see, we'll have to pay for eight. So it's just a additional.
Is that uh, what requirements for your trainer, is that something a coach could do as professional development? Or is that something that has to be?
It's a lot of school and I mean, if we did have. Or EMT could do it, so it's either EMT or an athletic trainer, um, we use one out of Rhode Island, he's, he's really good at what he does and he's. Costs, his cost isn't um, that much compared to other athletic trainers.
I'm assuming we're also gonna have to pay um, travel fees for them?
Um, I don't believe so, because um, like I said, our current athletic trainer is um in Rhode Island and can travel to our game, so. I don't believe there's any additional cost when you travel to the location.
But Matt, you'll find money, we don't have to readdress that.
Yeah, we're not gonna have to re-budget for, we'll probably be left on a thousand dollar.
Yeah, I don't see it being over that.
Thanks, Robert, nice work. Nice to see things going back to normal. Really is to see like the fall sports, you know, it's.
Sorry you made the softball team lose.
I felt awful that I had to tell them, I sent them email last night saying. I forgot about commitment because I was so excited for them to make it that I wanted to see them. I'll definitely be there, don't don't make any more, make me come anymore meetings, I want me there.
We'll be there, we can have our meeting at the field.
And I just wanna publicly, I I know I said this too the other night, but thank you for. You know, A, being at the game, I think it's important for our our athletes and parents to see. Um, administration, athletic direct, you know, teachers, I I sat with some teachers um to the game. And thank you for handling any uh craziness that may have been happening, so. Handled it well and I. Appreciated that very much.
Thank you, I mean, we have great kids too, because they. They were respectful and they remain respectful throughout the time, so. I mean, that's one of the great um privileges it's been this year is learning again to um. Get to know these kids and you guys produce great kids in this district and it's been an honor to be here and get to see them and I'm excited for next year and. Be able to see them without masks, because it was kind of hard at the beginning.
And I didn't know who the person was, I'm like, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize.
That's been one of the tough parts now that the mask are going now is recognizing who is.
Thank you, thank you.
Nice work.
Have a good night, everybody.
We'll be looking for your tweet for the announcement of the game.
Thank you, uh, that concludes my report, Mr. Aaron.
So the first piece of my report is the total revenue review. I can say as we are coming down to the end of the fiscal year. I can say as we are coming down to the end of the fiscal year, we have collected for the most part, the majority of our revenues. We do still have to bring in some of the, some of the um, grant-based funds that have been drawn down, but some of them even, um, there's a last drawdown window in June. So uh, we do sometimes receive those funds in July, which they get applied to this fiscal year, but.
And, and it's the end of the year, so we're running out of um, ink, so we had to find the smallest point size.
I apologize, uh, if I did not blow this uh, up again. I will make sure I magnify it to the appropriate size.
It's okay, just gonna bring the spectacles.
Apologies. Um, and again, all of the revenues are coming in as expected. In fact, uh, one piece to note, uh, we do have the Medicaid program revenue, which was expected to come in significantly lower than it usually does and I just received notification. It's not in this, but I received notification of uh, a third quarter payment that I think will put us over what we had budgeted for. So that's just positive news where once again, in some of these places where we were expecting to see shortfalls, particularly given this year, um, things are coming in as expected, if, if not better. There's questions with respect to the revenues? Our expenses are similarly moving as expected. We're coming down to the end of the year and um, we're getting to a much better place where we can, where, we can see where things are landing. Um, I think we'll have a, a detailed update as we move towards the June twenty-fourth meeting. Um, or potentially a kind of a closeout meeting, twenty-third, I'm sorry, that's right, the twenty-third. We'll have a, a closeout financial um, discussion. The noteworthy pieces on the, if you look at the general fund expenditure review, I do wanna just point out a, a couple of pieces. Um, due to COVID this year, um, we did see some savings with respect to the tuitions that we experienced. Some students, that's the ninety-four hundred line. It's on the, it's on the back page. We did see some, some savings there with respect to students that did not attend programs or only attended partially. Another place where we saw savings um, is in the thirty-three hundred line, which is on the first side. You may know that well, cause that comes up a lot. That's our transportation. Um, and again, that was also due to COVID um, from this year, but if you also recall, last year we moved a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of savings from last year's budget into a transportation fund for, for this year. So that's also um, what has helped produce that, that savings in that area. And the intention is to um, move some of those savings into two other areas. Uh, the first es- especially given what we've, what we've seen in COVID this year, the need for classroom technology. Um, so if you see the, the twenty-four fifty-one classroom technology line, uh, we're anticipating spending more than we had originally budgeted in that area. But it's not something that will bring the entire budget into any type of the way. Similarly, I know that we discussed uh, the security vestibules that we were not thinking we would be able to fund originally. Um, but we do think that with the savings that we're seeing now, we will be able to fund those so that forty-two twenty-five line, which is on the back, that it's maintenance of building, security. Then we're hoping that we'll be able to complete the actual security vestibule projects at both the complex and at Millville. I have newly updated estimates for those and I think we will be able to get the work started and completed prior to, prior to the beginning of the next school year. And if you, as you can see, if we piece the, the puzzle together between the general fund, um, they're still, we are still in the black on the general fund with respect to our spending. And when we move to the grant fund expenditure review on the second sheet, you can see our COVID expenditures are going to be offsetting some of those savings. Um, um, in particular, the emergency COVID line, which is now at approximately that three hundred and seventy-six thousand, um, which was, that was not budgeted for. But we're still in a very secure place financially at, at the bottom. If you look at the delta, the total of all expenditures, we're still looking at being in the black around that six hundred and forty-five thousand uh, dollar mark. So I'm anticipating that we will be very financially stable moving into the end of the year and that we will come out with a, a, our typical E and D for, for the year. So we'll have a further discussion about that on the twenty-third. Questions about that? I also have my personnel report for you to review. There's a lot of good things on that personnel report.
There's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of uh, anticipated people coming in, which is really nice to see.
Yeah, Matt, if I can add to that, I just wanna highlight if we have been really assertive about um, recruiting and bringing on board the special ed staff. Um, as you know, those some of you uh, in the work knows, it, it's really hard to find special education teachers, so we've been really aggressive about recruiting, A, retaining our folks and then B, recruiting for the vacancies and filling those. So a big shout out to, to Jill and the principals for their work on that. They're very like, very good candidates, top-notch candidates. Having interviewed all of them myself, they're, they're excellent. So excited about that.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report. I thought I was going first this time, but.
I, I, you know, I sit there with Jason and I think about it and then it goes right over my head.
It's perfectly fine.
What it, what it these days? All right, uh, committee members, anybody have anything they would like to bring to the table?
Congratulations to our graduates. Thank you to Mother Nature for getting Jason off the hook for any major decision that had to be made. And uh, we look forward to this year ending. Just, we just look forward to this year ending.
Moments before checking, watching the clouds and the radar.
Called in a favor with the big guy.
Wiping, wiping jet, wiping chairs.
Chair wipers.
And I have to say, thank you to the custodians that mobilized to try to make sure that everything was perfect for the beginning of that ceremony.
It was great. I think the seniors ended off as good as could be. The other night, the parade, again, the rain. And then um, their dinner. Um, my senior said it was excellent. He was very hungry and he enjoyed everything. He came straight from work. Um, just Jason and I had emailed you the other day, can we just um, confirm dismissal times on the last day of school? I know there was um, people posting very wrong times.
Yes, they are the usual uh, last day dismissal, yeah, like the nine-thirty at the high school and I believe ten-thirty at the elementary school.
Yeah.
And nine-forty at the middle school.
I guess, yeah, we won't meet until then, so I hope all the kids and staff have a great summer.
So yes, our next meeting is on a Wednesday instead of a Thursday, June twenty-third, six o'clock here. Um, but we do need to have an executive session, so we'll entertain a motion to move into executive session, not to return to um, to close the meeting from there and not return, so.
So.
So moved by Tara, seconded by Tammy. Um, and to move into executive session, we each vote individually, so Amanda?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we will leave this part of our meeting and move directly uh, into the conference room for an executive session. Thank you all very much. And again, congratulations to our retirees and and best wishes to Mike Duda.